Call to order the regular meeting of Planning Zoning Commission, Mr. Harmon? Or Ms. Benitez, whose honor is it to take the role?
Oh, I think Maricela will do a great job with it.
I think she would.
Commissioner Pro.
Present.
Commissioner Kapalongo.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Vice Chair Frost.
Present.
Chairman Pranzo.
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll go through the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. Okay, item four, discussion approval, disapproval of the minutes of the regular meeting conducted on January 7th, 2021. I did receive an email, Mr. Frost forwarded comments to our corrections for the minutes. And I have to say, there's one paragraph in here, I'm not even sure it's English. What I would suggest at this point is that, and I know it was a very long meeting, and this was a very tedious set of minutes to put together in type, I understand that, I really do. But we need to give it one more shot, try and get some of the words right and maybe even a little bit of grammar. I don't know, I know I don't speak well, but maybe you guys can help me out in that area. So I will move that we table the minutes of the regular meeting from January 7th, 2021 to allow corrections. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so motion by Chairman Pranzo, second by Commissioner Pro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, new business. This is a presentation, motion to approve, approve with conditions or deny of a design review application, PG 2028 by Big O Tire for a new Big O Tire retail store. Ms. Benitez, do we have a presentation?
We do, we have the representatives from Big O Tire here to give a presentation. I will first say that this is a designer review application. The site is located at 3445 North Hunt Highway in Florence and is part of the Anthem UD, and it is in one of, it is in Plaza, that's also where Safeway and McDonald's is located on Hunt Highway. That's the area.
So who gets the honors?
Yes.
I would like to start my presentation. Am I allowed to share my screen, please?
Yeah, you should be able to go ahead and share it if you go down at the bottom, there's a share screen kind of in the middle there. There you go.
This is a presentation by Ms. Grishina.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Maria Grishina, and I'm the project manager for these Big O Tires development. First couple of words about the developer's company, Simon Commercial Real Estate is the Nation Way retail developer specializing in built-to-suit tenant improvements and acquisitions. We have actually worked with Town of Florence before, that was a Sun Life Medical Building, and we're hoping to bring more great projects into the town. So speaking about Big O Tires, it's one of the largest retail franchisers with more than 450 independently owned and operated locations extending through 25 states, primarily in the Western and Midwestern United States. The closest stores that have been open already are in Centon Valley, Chandler, and the franchise is also developing quite a few in Levine, Cream Creek, and Buckeye. In addition to selling and servicing tires, wheels, and alignments, Big O Tires provide routine maintenance, replacement services included to oil and filter changes, batteries, brakes, suspension, and steering services. They're considered essential services, reliable, and COVID-19 resistant tenant. Big O Tires in Florence will approximately bring 4 million in sales annually. It will create 20 to 25 jobs, including full-time and part-time staff. The modern design look is already been approved by the Anthem Marketplace at Merrill Range HOA Community. Big O Tires don't use an edible paging system, and all the work is done within the bay areas and not on the parking lot. Here is the most recent site plan that was provided to us by the assigned civil engineer, Cypress Civil. The site is located next to Hunt Highway. The project consists of the construction of the new single-story auto and repair building with all the required parking and access improvements. The site is approximately one acre, and the building is going to be a little bit less than 7,500 square feet. Existing zoning is the Highway Business District B-2. Big O Tires is in allowed use, building height will be slightly over 24 feet. We're providing 46 parking spaces with access from Hunt Highway. Here is the potential Big O Tires elevations. We have shown desert outlook and the modern design. Proposed building is in compliance with the Anthem Marketplace at Merrill Range Design Requirements, and will have a cohesive look similar to the other existing buildings. There are eight bays across the entire building, one of which will be the drive-through bay for the fast services that allows the the person to stay in the vehicle while the maintenance is conducted. Now you're looking at the landscaping plan that we wanted to show that lots of greenery is coming to that site. We've placed quite a few trees on site, and our landscape plan again is with compliance with Merrill Range Design Guidelines and should be per the Town of Florence landscaping requirements as well. Please let me know if you have any questions or comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go back to full screen and I'll open it up to the commission, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments or questions.
Please, Vice Chair Frost.
It might be helpful if we go back to the presentation and the screen that has the landscaping element on it, if we could, please. I my, I guess the largest comment or the, I guess the most concern that I have is the placement of the, which I will assume is probably a seven-yard dumpster at the end of the, at the western end of the driveway on the south side of the building. When I scaled that, that would mean a 10-wheeler truck, front-load truck would come in, would pick up, and then he would have to back out approximately 130 feet blindly into that area where traffic is going through because of the vegetation on the south and the building and vegetation on the north. So that's my big safety concern is the placement of that, and I wanted to ask the applicant if that could be moved to the landscape island in the southeastern quadrant of the property rather than having it all the way down there where it goes along the back of those, that bay of cars, it just, it's just a safety concern where it's located there with that piece of heavy equipment backing up like that.
Thank you for your comment, Vice Chair Frost. We'll take into consideration the proposed new location of that. I'll consult with our designers and get back to the town with the proposed solution.
Yeah, it's just, that's just a scary backup for somebody driving a truck like that. And then just another comment, I think this is correct, but I just wanted you to acknowledge that it is. Is the pad where the dumpster is going to be placed, or the front-load dumpster, is it big enough so that the front axle of the truck is on concrete? I think it is, I just wanted to see that it is for sure. Reason I ask, reason I ask is if it's not, there will be indentations in the asphalt, will be destroyed in a very short amount of time. I'm assuming, and this I guess would be to staff, that from the comments in here about that regarding the town engineer, that stormwater retention is taken care of because I don't see where it's happening on the site, it's, there's not indicated. So I'm assuming that it's being taken care of. Maricela or Larry?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Frost, as a matter of fact, the town engineer has been very closely reviewing this entire project as far as grading and drainage and retention is concerned. And before it actually made it to the agenda, he was satisfied with the solution.
Very good. And then the last question is, and I'm just, just to acknowledge this, there will be no freestanding sign, all signage will be on the building, is that correct?
That is correct, Vice Chairman. I believe that Big O Tires is coordinating with the property managers to assign the panel on the existing monument sign, and then they will be applying directly to the Town of Florence for the building signage.
Perfect, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure. Mr. Chairman, thank you, that was my questions and concerns.
Vice Chair Frost, you had two questions, one of them was where the dumpster is located, and the other one is the concrete pad in order to support the weight of the truck. Are we going to make those, would you feel comfortable if we made those conditions?
I would love to see that, I think that's a big safety concern, I would love that to be a condition.
And then when it comes time, we'll, we'll make that a condition. Any other questions or comments, the other commissioners? That was really thorough, Mr. Frost. Can we get a full screen back? There we go, all the smiling faces, not a one.
I'm smiling.
You are now. Okay, any other questions or comments?
No. Chair, members of commission, I'm with Maria Grishina, my name is Peter Cramble, I'm with Simon Siri, I'm sitting right next to her here.
Yeah, I can see you have the same name.
I'm Swiss, she's Russian, but yeah, there you go. Just wanted to elaborate on that dumpster comment before it potentially becomes a condition. Just so you guys are pretty much aware, the site over here slopes considerably, there's a considerable slope, approximately six feet. I don't know if you have an Alta or that was included in your packets, but the reason why that dumpster was put on the south side and not on the north side was because of that considerable slope. So in order for us to have the driveway aprons that Big O needs in order to get a, say, disabled car in, from the parking lot into the bays for servicing, you can't have more than a 1 to 1.5% grade over, say, approximately 30 feet or so away from the, away from the building. So because of this considerable sloping over the whole site, and because the site is defined over this certain parcel, we had to put the trash enclosure to the south side. So that's kind of the logic and why it's over there and where it's at. But I do get your concerns, it's just, it's a considerable detriment to the operations of Big O because they have to have these certain slopes for their aprons that go into the bay where you can't have a steep slope, and then you have two mechanics trying to push up against a 3, 4, even I think it was up to 10% slope, that's like pushing it up a hill practically, and that doesn't work operationally, so you have to keep the grades at a certain amount. So again, that's kind of the logic behind it.
All right, well, it's not going to relieve us of a responsibility to address public safety, particularly from a large vehicle backing up, Mr. Frost?
Yeah, just, just so there's no confusion, I wasn't proposing doing it on the north side. I was proposing moving it to the landscaped area in the southeastern quadrant of the property, which would be on the east of the eight or nine parking spaces that are there on the south side of the building.
Maria, can you pull up that again so we can kind of share that, and then we can move the arrow over exactly where we would like to see this? Just zoom in a bit, too. So you're saying more towards the east, is that outside of the property line? Because I'm not kind of seeing where that would be.
Oh, it's inside the property line, southeast corner?
Southeast corner, inside the landscape area, can move your
Is that the drive?
Your cursor is about to get there, move a little bit further to the other direction, to the west. Go straight down, right there. That's, that's a landscaped area according to your landscape planned, and the truck could make a 45-degree angle into there, pick it up and back out short distance and go on its way versus 130 feet in, 130 feet out, and back blindly into that traveling.
Okay, there is existing utility services that are right there, do you see those, those two boxes? And then there's some easements that are right there. So those shadowed lines, and you really have to kind of zoom in, Maria. I believe those are APS and Johnson Utility anymore, who's a Canadian company that, there's two services there, one for water and one for electric that are within that area.
What about the, the area where, the landscape area where the the arrow for number 12 is pointing into?
That is curb, let me see.
No, keep going east, so that it's part of the actual, yes, right there.
That looks to be curb, but let me, I can't really tell.
Well, but it's not existing curb, I mean, that's part of your design to actually carve out the 45 to get the dumpster in there, and that way it's actually hidden from street view a lot better, too.
Yeah, I guess we can, we can explore that. I guess that's the, that, that could be a possible other logistical area. I just have to make sure that ADA works with those doors right there behind, but that's something we could definitely kind of explore.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might continue on this, so so as the fire marshal, I reviewed these, these site plans, and I don't see on the site plans where they show the fire hydrant. I did relocate the fire hydrant, and I believe it's in the area of the utilities that Vice Chairman Frost was first discussing, and I don't know if, if you can, it doesn't show, I don't believe, on this plan where that relocation was, but I'm fairly sure it was also in that area, so just, just as an FYI on that. We could, we could certainly, I could certainly pull up the plan tomorrow, the, the other site plan, not necessarily just the landscaping plan, and confirm that.
Part of your stipulation might also include that this has to be approved by the trash hauler for the center.
You're not hauling tires, are you? The other Maria? I don't think he's on board.
I've had enough experience with private haulers that they will agree to anything if they get the contract.
Yeah. My feelings exactly. I can't get the gentleman, I don't know his name.
Oh, is it, is you, are you trying to talk to me, Peter?
No, Gary. All right, we're at an impasse here, this, this is work that needs to take place. The, the Mr. Grishina. Are you on board?
Yes.
We're here, yep.
He can hear you.
Okay, let's have a full screen back. Thank you, now we can see everybody. Are there any other questions or comments?
When do they expect to break ground and begin construction? Is there a date?
As soon as we will pull up the permits, we're aiming to start the construction thereafter immediately. So hopefully, either second quarter of 2021 or a little bit further. As soon as we have permits, we are fully ready to mobilize and break ground.
All right, would anybody like to try and make a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve based on what Commissioner Frost pointed out. We need to make sure that those, those concerns are mitigated or rectified, but based on those conditions, I move that we go ahead and approve.
All right, I'll second that motion that the
I'm sorry, that's the motion with conditions, correct?
Yeah, I'm just getting ready to do that.
Okay.
Who was, who are we dealing with now? Are we dealing with the contractor, the architect? Ms. Grishina, which company do you work for, Big O?
I work for Simon Commercial Real Estate, that's a developer, and then we directly work with Big O Tires on their processes, and then with designers and architects for the entitlements and permitting plans.
So you are, your company is the entity responsible for completing the project?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I'll second that motion with the conditions that the dumpster location be addressed to a satisfactory safety condition that the dumpster is located on a concrete pad suitable to hold the weight of a heavy truck, and that the location is suitable to the trash hauler. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Grishina and Mr. Grishina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, presentation discussion regarding the recent voter-approved Proposition 207, "If you have them, smoke them", and Town Council Direction on Recreational Marijuana.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, emergency commission, that was good, Mr. Chairman. I needed that today. As you are all aware, Proposition 207 did, was passed by the voters on November 3rd of last year. Since then, you know, the state has been finalizing their rules and regulations, which is still partially a work in progress, I understand. The Town Council at their January 4th meeting, I believe it was, adopted a ordinance, a model ordinance that had been provided by the Arizona League of Cities. So many communities around the state are adopting this ordinance, and it has to do with the process of licensing, licensing, and et cetera, of recreational marijuana facilities. A copy of that council report and council adopted ordinance is attached to yours, to the staff report. This is just for information tonight, and if you have any specific questions that we might be able to address prior to a public hearing, which has been scheduled for February 4th in front of the Planning Commission for a recommendation. The, the new Prop 207 basically has given first right of recreational sales to medical marijuana facilities, existing and current medical marijuana facilities that have a license with the state. I believe there's 52 of them statewide. In Pinell County, there's one in Coolidge, a couple in Patchy Junction, a couple in Casa Grande, as far as I'm aware of. None are located in Florence. Those 52 licensees are all taken and sold, and those stores are existing. The new legislation would allow 26 additional recreational facilities or recreational licenses for sale around the state. Now, there is a kind of a prioritization on how those will be distributed, they will still be application-based. For any county that currently has two or less, they will kind of have first right of refusal for new licensees. So from that standpoint, that we have so many medical facilities already within Pinell County, they have first right on the recreational, so our, our prioritization kind of falls down the list a little bit compared to other places like probably Navajo County, Apache County, maybe La Paz and some others. We did do an analysis of the development code to look for the simplest way to amend it to possibly allow for a sales facility to be built or at least opened within the town itself. There were certain, you know, a couple of different levels you could take, we could amend each individual business section of which there are six total, one of which we have no land zoned that way, that's the tourist commercial properties, the TRC. But and the same with heavy industrial HI, we don't have any properties zoned under that classification at this point in time. They could be written up in each wing of those sections, or we could, and/or we could amend the district use tables, which is a scroll-down table that's in the development code. Neither one of those portions or elements are comprehensive in our development code. The, the individual district write-ups do not necessarily cover every business that could happen in there. The district use regulation table does not cover every business that could be located in each of those areas also. I'm trying really hard not to sneeze.
Give it a whack and get it over with.
So, in any event, this was presented as part of the council packet, and if you look at the RCA, the council report, you'll see that in there. The simplest method of amending our code would be to do the, the district use regulation tables. In your staff report, I'm showing you what is existing right now. It's for medical marijuana dispensaries and operations only. Right now, medical dispensaries would be in the B2 highway business or light industrial, the LI, as with a conditional use permit, or full-out cultivation and operations infusion facilities, et cetera, would only be allowed in light industrial with a conditional use permit. But changing that table would be the simplest method. But changing that table would be the simplest method to amend our code. Council direction at January 4th was at this point, they would like the, like us, the staff to process an amendment to the code that would allow outright medical and recreational marijuana sales, dispensaries, infusion facilities, et cetera, in the neighborhood business, highway business, downtown commercial, tourist commercial, light industrial and heavy industrial zones. So that is what we have advertised for public hearing for February 4th. And wanted to bring for you, in front of you tonight, just so you have a little bit of familiarity with the proposition and what the council action and desire has been to date. So, and with that, Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to address them. Or if it's something we need to do more research on, we'll be contacting the authorities up in Town Hall who have really studied this and have been working closely with the League of Cities as far as drafting our own local ordinances.
Okay, I'll open up to the commission. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I guess just a question of Larry. Are we, where are we? Are we on the cutting edge of this in Arizona or is there somebody in half of us that we're watching? And are they moving forward with kind of the same program that our council has favored or just a little more background, please?
Certainly. I think from what I have been gleaning from newspaper, you know, clippings and articles that I subscribe to regularly and around Pinal County as well as around the state. I would say that maybe 20 to 25% of the communities in the state have already moved forward with some form of legislation within their community. A couple of them are opposing any change to their land use and they're zoning them out of their communities. Now, the full rationale, I'm not really that familiar with because, you know, newspaper articles only report, you know, the highlights. So, but the smaller communities are the ones that seem to be really addressing this with open arms. Because this is a, can be a significant sales tax generator for those communities. So, you know, communities like ours and the Coolidges and the Casa Grande's and as well as around the state have really been opening up very favorably to passing something that would allow dispensaries in some form or another within their communities.
Thank you.
Mr. Harmer, I had one observation. As I read through it, there is quite a list of don'ts. Don't this, don't that. It seemed to address a lot that has to do with residential. And my experience is that the list of don'ts can never be long enough. I'm wondering if it might be better to, to have something that starts out with the cultivation use sales is restricted to a certain area rather than having such a long list of do nots.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that is part of the town code amendment that was made. The part that goes into development code, the way I'm currently drafting it is going to be very short and simple. And it's going to say this is permissible in these areas. So it's not going to be a don't list. The don't list has already been adopted by the town council. As, you know, it's very similarly to the way they would handle liquor licenses and things of that nature. But what I'm going to be proposing and what you will see in your next packet is basically taking what I show on page four of the staff report with, has the little matrix there of use and the B1, B2, TRC, et cetera. And that's going to be a strike all and I will duplicate it underneath with the more permissive. Basically that everything would be permitted in these various areas and just kind of tweaking the language a little bit.
Great. Okay, well, it's not something we're going to approve or disapprove, so.
No, it comes to you for a public hearing and a recommendation.
Great. Any other questions or comments concerning marijuana? Okay.
It'll be interesting. Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. It'll be interesting to see what, what the public hearing, what kinds of concerns are exposed. I did, I mean, you know, Colorado was the first state to legalize marijuana. And lots of positives in terms of the revenue that is produced for the state. But one of the negatives is public safety with regard to what I saw as a statistic. Automobile accidents fatalities have increased like 153%. So that's one of the negatives. I don't know what, what what concerns the public hearing may voice or if there, if anyone's anticipating what those concerns might be, but anyway, that's one of the things that, one of the negatives, I know we're communities are interested in the revenue, but there's a downside too. So anyway, I'm just, just a, a comment.
I believe that, I can't recall if it was at the January 4th or a previous meeting in front of the council, there was a call to the public person, individual who did state their concern.
Okay, okay.
But only one.
Only one. So that's interesting. Yeah. All right. We are a democracy.
All the discussion is giving me the munchies.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we figure the biggest business opportunity in town is if we get one of these, is I want the pizza shop next door.
There you go.
Twinkies and fried Oreos.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, then moving right along to old business. This is a presentation, a motion to recommend approval. Approval with conditions or denial of the town of Florence downtown redevelopment plan. Is Ms. Dornfield with us?
This is Dorn, Ms. Dornfield is with us, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to do the introductory presentation if I may.
Okay, not the long one.
No, this will be the short one.
Okay.
Leslie is with us, just in case there's any specific questions that she can address. We're not going to go through it again. Subsequent to your last meeting regarding this subject, and we've had one with H stack, plus we are still getting. Oh, good. Leslie can't talk anyway. Judging from that message. But the comments we've gotten from H stack as well as some public comments. We did not update the draft that we attached again. This is still the same draft. The reason being is there have been incremental adjustments and reviews on this and it started getting confusing because I think we're, this is the third or fourth iteration of the draft. So what we're doing is compiling comments. And they will be part of the staff report that goes to the council whenever they initiate their final review on it. But some of the things that we've heard from the commissions, plural, are some of them are very simple, general corrections, a couple of spelling errors like for the Gadsden purchase and, and then the difference between east and west. The north-south corridors, west of the redevelopment area and the connection to I-10 is west of downtown. You know, simple things. Some things we heard from the commission is to provide more detail regarding market area and retail leakage. Some more, a little bit more consistency in the map legends and the story maps. To make sure, certain that we refer to Florence as a town, not a city. Also, when we got into the discussion about parking, to do a specific recommendation of a parking study for the redevelopment area, specifically the historic core and also look at it in the terms of long-term, long-term considerations. For example, future need or location of a parking structure down the road. Also, as the town matures, the core area matures and tries to move forward. And as budgets permit to actually investigate the possibility of hiring a part-time or full-time staff position who basically focuses on downtown viability. This might be in conjunction with the new economic development division. And then also to identify a little bit more detail on downtown building conditions and how the lack of maintenance emphasizes the, and accelerates the deterioration. And when that regard helps discourage redevelopment revitalization. And also then also the consolidation or some cross referencing on those various pages, Mr. Chairman, that you had mentioned 20, 25 and 37. So those were the basic thoughts that came out of your last discussion. We have them noted down in our own files in a little bit more detail. And that'll be presented as part of the council's deliberation, as I stated.
Okay, well, I would be remiss if I don't bring these things up. Since our last discussion, I've had numerous people come up to me and two things floated to the top. The first one was that they felt that the downtown needed an anchor tenant. They felt strongly the suggestion in the package that demolishes the existing burnt out theater and replacing that with an outdoor market should move up in rank as far as suggestions. And the second one, and I've heard this many times before, but it was brought up again. There are a great many people, at least on this side of town, who would like to move the rodeo grounds from where they are, take them away from the posse, the posse. The public opinion on the posse's stewardship of the rodeo grounds is very poor. They would like the rodeo grounds to move up to Territory Square. And for that to become a multi-purpose arena, not just restricted to equestrian as a piece that would create some synergy to the town. Which I thought was a great idea too. So I need to put them out because I've been asked about them more times than I can count.
If you wanted to add those as comments, that would be fine.
May I?
Yeah, certainly. And, but I'm thinking, you know, maybe as a comparison, are you familiar with the facility that Queen Creek has?
Yes, I am. And that's one of the things, that's the motivation that made these comments.
Kind of what I thought.
Yeah, good.
We will note that.
Great. So all we can do is find the money to build it.
Recreational marijuana.
There you go. I like it.
Keep it away from the horses.
We could smoke our way to prosperity. All right then, do we have any other questions or comments considering the redevelopment plan?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Frost.
Larry, what is the timeline of taking this to council for their final approval?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Frost, where I'm actually working with the town clerk at this point to kind of coordinate that. We have not set dates yet. That'll be first a formal presentation by the consultant, similar to what you had. And then depending on the outcome and the council discussion on that particular evening, we will know whether they will want any additional study or whether or not we will bring it back for a resolution of adoption. So I'm hoping that we're looking at March.
Good. Mr. Harmer, could I ask one last question?
You can ask as many as you want.
Well, it's getting late.
Okay.
I understand that this is a requirement imposed on us by the state.
Yes, sir.
Does the state follow up and audit what we've done with these things?
In this particular case, they could. It would be much more likely with the redevelopment plan than it would be with the general plan, and that's because there are penalties.
Can I, can I kick in a little bit?
Ms. Dornfield.
Hi. They don't audit, but what this does is it leaves the door open for you. The reason all of the, I'm going to remind you, Larry, because this is what we talked about in the beginning. The reason this happened is that you can use JIPlets, which are government lease property excise tax as a tool in a redevelopment area to encourage development. And the city of Phoenix very aggressively, we did their redevelopment area as well, very aggressively uses JIPlets. As the economic development director put it to me, most of the larger projects were built with JIPlet downtown. And it really helps to reduce the cost of development and make a downtown that's struggling like yours, much more marketable. The JIPlet, because it's an excise tax, it reduces taxes, the school districts sued through the, I think it was Goldwater Institute, I might be wrong on that, to make sure that those taxes were not lost because they felt that a 10-year loss of taxes from some of these major projects in downtown Phoenix was really nailing them. And the ultimate resolve was we need redevelopment areas. JIPlet's a legit tool. But we can't just let these things lay around for years and years and years and years and years. And in the case of Phoenix, their redevelopment area was designated before the freeway was built. So, and you look at their downtown and it's quite lively and quite built up. And so I think the school districts are saying, hey, you know, there's a point at which you really don't need to use the JIPlet anymore. These redevelopment areas are quite robust and stable and we should be able to benefit tax-wise from new development that occurs in them. And I think the court agreed with that, but they also said, you know, some of them still are very legitimate. So they set a timeline to redesignate and then redo the plans for these redevelopment areas. And I think that was the designation had to occur by, I think it was October 2020, which you guys did. And then the plan has to occur after. So that's why you're updating your plan in your area.
That's correct. And that's, that's where I was going with that. And basically, not a formal, no, that's fine. You get it in a whole lot more detail than I was going to. But basically what it comes down to is that by not updating our plan, we lose the JIPlet authority. And that's what we use on the Silver King to help benefit tenants in that location. But it also opens it up for challenges. And, you know, if we haven't updated our plan and somebody, you know, we try to use any of the guidelines or anything that's in the current plan, you know, they could be, we would, we would lose the challenge. Now, unlike a general plan update, which is also by statute supposed to happen every 10 years, there's no penalty. With the redevelopment plan, basically if you don't get yourself in a position to re-adopt in the timeframe that was established by statute, the plan is null and void.
Okay. Well, just to voice my concern or the reason is that the, there is a lot of successful investment that is occurring in and around the Anthem area. There's investment that's on the table planned out for the future. And it, it feels to me anyway, that this redevelopment plan will compete with those investments. And so it's my hopes, because I am worried the further this side of town deteriorates, so does the potential for investment. And so I'm, I'm hoping that this is strong enough that council and particularly the town manager will take a sincere interest. Okay, so any other questions or comments? Mr. Frost?
Chairman, just another question, Larry. So will we get a chance to see the completely reformatted plan before it goes to council?
Oh, certainly. We want to, once it's ready to go to council, we want to redistribute it to all of, all of you who have been involved.
Excellent. Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, then I will move that we approve the Florence Downtown Redevelopment Plan 2020 with the conditions that it include or at least consider the comments that were offered by Mr. Harmon.
I second.
I'm sorry, who said that?
Mr. Capalongo, I second.
Mr. Capalongo. So we have a motion by Chair Pranzo, second by Commissioner Capalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you all.
Congratulations, Ms. Dornfield, Mr. Harmer. That package is, has a lot of low-hanging fruit. So, I mean, you can start anywhere and achieve something.
Chairman Pranzo, members of the commission, I just want to say thanks and especially Chairman Pranzo, I really enjoyed your comments. They were great and substantive. And so thank you so much for them. Really appreciate them. I think it'll end up with a better com, a better product. And I think it was you also, Commissioner Frost, that made the parking comment last time, maybe, but whoever made those, those were great comments too. So we will, we're actually in the process of updating the plan now, literally based on what you said, and, and we'll move it forward. So you'll be able to see that hopefully coming online very quickly. So thank you again.
Thank you.
It's a real privilege. Thanks.
Okay, moving right along. For information only, general plan update.
Okay, general plan process is moving forward. We've approved a online survey. Mari Sella, has that been posted yet? Are you aware?
The website survey?
Yes.
I've seen a banner on the town website.
Okay.
And I also have received posters from the
All right.
consultant advertising it.
Yeah, we'll be distributing the, some of these posters and, you know, flyers around downtown, around town in general. Uh, and then the, it's a citizen survey. We're not calling it a community survey because that was done about two years ago and the council is still working with that. So this is going to be, you'll see it advertises a general plan survey. This is to garner information and, and just the basic thoughts and feelings of people, the community, on how they would like to see the community grow and prosper. So basically with that, we're going to be probably getting into community meetings, even if they're via Zoom. We're anticipating by early summer.
Good. Okay, uh, future agenda items.
Okay, I've got a bit of a list for you tonight. Uh, these are things that you may not see at your next meeting. Uh, but they're going to be coming up over the next few meetings or several months. First of all, for your next meeting will be two public hearings, ones on home occupations to adopt, uh, recommend approval of the changes that you have all made to the town council for adoption as an ordinance. Also will be the, um, new wording for the medical and recreational marijuana. And Mari, did we have any designer views for that one at this point?
At this point, no.
Okay.
The superstar and the others have just arrived, so.
Yeah, uh, we, you may have a preliminary plat for Freedom Farms, which is a development up north. Just south of Magma Ranch, we have received applications from, uh, uh, Superstar Car Wash, which would be immediately north of this new Big O Tire. Uh, and we've, uh, received one or in the process of receiving one from the, uh, American Leadership Academy. Uh, they're going to be going in with a full-blown high school and athletic fields. Uh, they will more than double the size of the facility that they have existing now on Hut Highway at Franklin Road. We also, uh, Vice Chair Frost, you had brought up Epcor. There are some things going on that will be reflected in upcoming projects. And, you know, in different plats, basically, uh, and, and that's why it's relevant to the future agenda items. We're not sure when the closing date is going to be, but, uh, the sale of Johnson Utilities to Epcor has been initially approved by the Corporation Commission. There, we're waiting for some ADEQ rulings on some previous lawsuits against the utility before that finalizes and is closed. The sales price by, approved by the Corporation Commission is a little bit over a hundred and ten million dollars. Although a significant percentage of that is, will be paid for by ratepayers. I guess they're talking about some type of a monthly surcharge against the customer's bill for the next fifteen years. I don't know details of that at this point. I don't know that those details have been worked out. But that is obviously with that sale, that's going to provide, allow Epcor to make improvements that have been necessary to the JU facilities. That's going to allow for future development within not only the town of Florence, but up into Stanton, Stanton Valley. Uh, so that's, this is going to significantly impact, uh, future development proposals that come before you. Also related to the downtown, we are in discussions right now with, uh, two different potential projects that would come in front, uh, before you. At this point, we think they would. One would be for a fifty to sixty unit apartment complex. We're working with a developer on possible locations in and around the downtown core. Also, one of the old dead plats, uh, that was approved back in the oh, oh, so seven, or back in there approximately is being looked at by a home builder to revise that or re, re resuscitate that plat. We, we call them zombie subdivisions. They're coming back to life and a second life. And they were, they will be coming in front of you because they're looking at doing a replat, starting with a preliminary plat to adjust some lot sizes and densities out there. But it would probably result in the three hundred and fifty to four hundred unit range.
Is that along Adamsville Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we are getting a lot of interest around, in and around the downtown core right now. Uh, so I think these are things that you will be seeing or hearing about over the next few months.
Great.
I think that covers it for right now.
Wow, that's a no.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, what about, uh, grinders? What's the status on the grinders?
Well, it's not agendized. So by open meeting law, I can give you an update at the next meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Wink if it's dead.
Just curious, yeah.
All right, moving right along, call to the public. Do we have any public comments?
There's no public, uh, in the meeting right now.
Okay, well, then I'll close call to the public. A call to the commission, current events only. I have a current event. It's not a good one. Uh, in this, just this week, I've lost two friends to Corona. Both worked for uh, Public Works. I understand there's a third person who's also died from COVID at Public Works as well. So the current event is that COVID is here in Florence, people. And you need to take notice. Two in a week, maybe three. I don't know when the other person died. That's a lot. So anyway, not good news, but it's news that people should be aware of. Do we have any other current events? Mr. Frost?
I, I guess the first one is to, um, recognize and welcome Mr. Capalongo. Thanks for being here with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
And, uh, Larry, a, a question for a future agenda. The freeway corridor, we heard a lot and then we just haven't heard anything for a long time now. If there's any updates on that, I think an update next time around would be great for us. Thank you.
Will do.
Yeah, that would be nice if it doesn't go any further west.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Frost. Any other current events? Okay. Capalongo, is that an Irish name?
Very much, very much so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Vice Chair Frost. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Good night, gentlemen.